I'd like to tell the meeting back to order. Item A, public meeting on the clean water state revolving funds. CWSRF project, inland district sewer improvement project to reset.
So I think those in the audience who are not aware, several months ago, Hallowa Park provided a presentation to the city council on the basis of design for a significant sewer improvement program for Gross Point Farms. The intent is to construct a pump station away to convey stormwater out to Lake St. Clair and reduce the amount of wet weather flow coming into the, going to our Kirby Road pump station by about a third, which is obviously very significant. It's a, it's a major project, an expensive project, but something that is felt needed to address the seemingly increased frequency of extreme weather events, heavy rainfall and so forth. As part of that process, after the basic design is completed, we are now seeking assistance, federal assistance for funding, primarily through the state revolving fund, which would provide low interest loans on a major project. There are other grants we are also pursuing to cover some of the costs for a major capital improvement project. As part of that application for both, for the federal and state funding, public hearing is required to go over a project plan. And that's what we're here for tonight. Jennifer Morelli in steer, Tom Maxwell from Hallowa Park to provide a project plan. So that would be really the public portion of the meeting to go with the project plan. On the project plan proposal, council will be asked, consider adopting the project plan as well as commencing the engine, the final engineering for the project. So with that, I will turn it over to Jennifer.
Thank you Shane. I guess you save the best for last, so that's good. Thank you, City Council, Mr. Mayor, for letting me present the project plan for this very important inland district sewer separation project. So the purpose of tonight is to present the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, the CWSRF project plan, and it's to provide a forum for community participation. So we're going to go over briefly the overview, the loan program, and then we'll review the items that are in the project plan, such as the system history, the need for project, the alternatives, the overall project costs and estimated user costs, the social and environmental impacts, the mitigation of these impacts, the schedule, changes since the draft plan was posted, and then go provide any answers to questions that people may have. So what is the CWSRF loan program? Quite simply, it's a low interest loan program. So for fiscal year 23, the 20-year interest rate was 1.875% and a 30-year interest rate was 2.125%. So these rates won't be finalized for this, for this project till October of this year. And, but we suspect that the rates will be very close to these, if not exactly these rates. Incidentally, if this currently, if the city were to go out to market for, for a loan, it's estimated that for a 20-year rate, you'd be looking at a 4% interest and for a 30-year loan, you'd be looking at a 4.5% interest rate. So you can see just before I walk, you know, it does behoove the city to try to get this low interest loan. So what can you use this low interest loan dollars for? It's for planning, designing, and constructing eligible wastewater projects. It's administered by Eagle through their water infrastructure finance division. So to qualify, currently, the city must do three things. One, they must prepare and submit an Eagle approvable project plan. Two, they must provide a public meeting and comment opportunity for the plan. And then three, they have to pass a resolution adopting the plan. Final Eagle approval and city acceptance of the loan is decided later in the loan program. So in October, the city will find out if they're, if they're in what's called the fundable range. And if the city decides to pursue the SRF loan, we anticipate that your loan closing would not be until around August of 2024. So you can back out of the SRF loan program at any time prior to your loan closing. So you're not committed, by passing the council resolution tonight, you're not committed to SRF, you know, and proceeding with the SRF project or doing an SRF loan. So real quick, the Gross Point Farm sewer system was originally, was built in the 1920s and it was originally built as a combined sewer system. So what this means is your sanitary sewage and your stormwater runoff, they're all collected in the same pipe. And so when you have rain events, for small storms, it's, you know, typically there are no issues. And then for medium storms, typically there are no issues. But it's for those really large, big storms where you can have issues like basement flooding. So due to the increased occurrence of basement flooding, the Lakeside District sewers were separated in the early 2000s. So why did the city just do the lakeside? Well, it's all to do with topography in that the ground, there's a high point on that east, western boundary of your Lakeside District and it runs along Ridge Road generally. And so the Lakeside District was easier to separate sewers because you could install storm sewers and they can discharge by gravity out to Lake St. Clair. We'll come back to our issue over here on the inland district. So what's the need for project? Starting in 2011 with increased frequency and magnitude of rain events that resulted in increased break, frequency and magnitude of basement and street flooding. And the reoccurring flooding resulted in numerous studies in the inland district, starting in 2011. And it culminated in the sewer system evaluation study that was finalized in August of 2020. In that study, 13 different alternatives were investigated and alternative six was the recommended alternative. So alternative six is what we're calling the inland district sewer separation project. And it includes 3,600 linear feet of 48-inch force main and 3,200 linear feet of gravity main out to the lake. We've got 100 cubic feet per second stormwater pump station. And so if you come back to our little diagram, and the reason why, this is why we need the force main and the pump station. So when we separate all that yellow area in the background there, it's got to be directed to the pump and then the pump's going to put it in the force main, get it up over this high point, and then once we're there, it can go by gravity out to Lake St. Clair. So this, it also includes separating the 310 acres with the installation of 17,000 linear feet of new storm sewer. We're converting the 60-inch combined interceptor to a storm interceptor. And then South of Maras, we have the partial separation along Vernon, McMillan, and McKinley Streets with the installation of 11,500 linear feet of new storm sewer. So this project plan requires that you got to look at certain alternatives and the do, the do, no action alternative, that's a requirement. So with no action, then the city would be, continue to be subject to potential basement flooding for the design event. So this is not a favorable option. Another required alternative is to look at regionalization. And this would require building infrastructure and pipes and pumps and force mains out to the closest treatment plant. So go to, go to GLWA or you go to Warren. And this would be a tremendous amount of energy and a lot, and very expensive. So this is also not a favorable option. That's messed up. So the fourth alternative was good to be to look at stormwater retention basin and sewer improvement. So the basin would result, you would need a 3.3 million gallon basin and you would have to construct the new storm sewers in the same areas that we talked about for the selected alternative. And it's more expensive than the selected alternative, so this is considered not favorable. So when we talk about our preferred alternative, all the, most of the construction activities are proposed at existing locations within the combined sewer system or within city-owned property, with the exception of the force main through the Country Club of Detroit and the new outfall to the lake. So these are all the same elements that we just talked about, but they're grouped into these three contracts. And this is part of what was presented to council at your October meeting. So we have contract one, which is going to be the force main and gravity sewer. Contract two is the pump station and then contract three is sewer separation. So what you see in this graphic is your plan view and we have the pump station over in this corner of Maras and Chelphane. We'll show that one next. And you have your force main that's going to bring the flows up. And then at the high point, it's going to convert over to like a gravity sewer and then the gravity sewer will take it out to the lake. And below is a profile to show you like this, the force main and then the gravity sewer. Contract two is the 100 CFS pump station and it's going to be located in the parcel that's the northeast corner of Maras and Chelphane. And this is a city-owned property. So we're all set.
It's also one of the lowest points in the entire city. It is, it's the lowest point in the city.
So what you see in this graphic is you've got the, that 60-inch converted storm pipe that this is all, this is all underground. It'll come into a, the flows will come in discharge into a junction chamber. And then we have our 78-inch input into our lovely new pump station. And then the pump is going to pump the flows into that force main. These are some cross-section views and these were presented again at your October meeting, but it's to give you an idea of all the equipment that needs to be housed in the pump station itself. But not to worry, the pump station is going to be locate, built inside this Cape Cod-style home. So it's going to match with the, you know, existing area. And to the average person, they're not even going to realize that's a pump station. They'll just think it's another beautiful house in Gross Point Farms. So all the details of color and bushes and all that kind of stuff, that'll get worked out later. But it's the style of the home that will be, will be used. So that was contract two. And now this is the contract three locations of the, that'll go, oh yeah. So we looked at the Northwest Quad separation and these are different views of the Northeast Quad separation. And then we have the separation of South of Maras along Mount Vernon.
Sorry.
Oh, okay. So we have our partial separation, South of Maras along Mount Vernon, McMillan, and McKinley Streets. So these three contracts, they total $39,465,000. So we talk about estimated user costs. This is an estimated average residential user and by user, it's household. Over, we're assuming a 20-year loan for, for the 39 million. And so the cost, incremental cost increase per month on average is $44.69. So this is a theoretical calculation. There's a lot of variables involved. But this is a, an average user cost. So when we talk about in short-term positive impacts, there's increase in jobs and workers utilizing community amenities and employing local contractors. Short-term negative impacts, of course, are the noise, dust, and traffic related to construction. Long-term positive impacts, we have reduced frequency and magnitude of basement flooding, stormwater being removed from the combined system, reduced flows to the Kirby Road pump station, reduced flows to the regional system, thereby benefiting neighboring communities, reduced sewage fees with the Great Lakes Water Authority, increased level service for the entire city. The long-term negative impacts are none. Another required element is to look at irreversible direct and indirect impacts. So there's possible impacts due to, like if you have damage from, or accidents from construction. And then there's the commitment of non-recoverable resources. But again, these resources are traded off to provide the necessary protection to public safety and health with the reduction in frequency and magnitude of basement flooding. So how are we going to mitigate these impacts? So for, on the short-term side, we would comply with any required permits. Residential notifications for construction will be, they'll be provided. Construction traffic can be scheduled to avoid peak traffic flow periods and we have routine street sweeping during construction. The mitigation of long-term impacts, areas will be restored once the work is completed. And then the pump station itself will be housed in a Cape Cod-style exterior, keeping up with the city's aesthetic in the area. Okay, schedule. So we, the city posted the public meeting on their website on March 24th and the draft project plan has been available since then. It was available online and also hard copy at City Hall. So tonight, we're doing the formal public meeting and the city council will adopt the resolution to adopt the project plan. And then we have until May 1st to make any final changes or answer, provide answers to questions. And that will go in the final project plan that's submitted on or before May 1st. When we talk about the construction schedule, these are like three contracts again. So contract one is our force main. The design for that needs to start this month. We're in order, the biggest thing is we have to start construction in November of 2024 because that work's going to occur in the golf course. So we need to can start construction in their off-season. So design needs to start immediately. And we anticipate that that will continue through January of 2024. And construction starting in November of 24 and ending in October of 2025. Contract two, which is the new stormwater pump station, that design needs to start this month as well. And that will be finished in March of 2024 with construction starting in June of 2024 and ending in May of 2026. And then our contract three is the combined sewer separation. The design would start later than July of this year and we'd be done in April of 2024 with construction starting in September of 24 and ending in September 2026. A few changes since the draft project plan was posted. In section three, under table 3.2, there was a typo where a period meant to be a comma. So changed the dollar value, but anyone reading it would understand. Section four, we just changed the schedule so it matched the three contracts instead of separating out the partial separation from the full separation. So with that, we will open it up to questions.
Thank you. Great presentation. Let's try to follow the order here. So I'm going to start on the left this time.
I do have a question. I have a comment, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Maxwell, Ms. Muriel, Mr. Haminga, administration. I can't tell you, having been involved in these types of issues for close to three decades, unfortunately. This is a very well-drafted plan. I don't think it's meant to eliminate basement flooding categorically. I think our residents are still going to have to do things such as make sure that their leads are clean, especially if they have trees in the area, disconnect downspouts and make sure that they take steps in their basements to minimize the risk of flooding. But I know that a 30% decrease in amount of flow to our pump station will make us less dependent, dependent on downstream entities such as Great Lakes Water Authority and other public entities, so to speak. I think this is a very good investment for those who live, work, and visit the city of Gross Point Farms. It will be messy for a while, but I applaud our administration, Mr. Mayor, you, our city attorney. I know it's taken a lot of negotiation with a lot of different groups. And I think this is the first step and I'm in support of approval of the various resolutions, requests for qualifications, and the ultimate contracts. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Muriel. I also share the appreciation for everyone involved, the work that went to put together this plan. You know, the first time I really got a chance to delve, dive deep into it was back in February of 2021. So we're a long time getting to this point. I think it's a thoughtful process because it's such a big, such a big process. You know, at the same time, it's not moving fast enough for the most used basements to flood it. And so that is, that is a real thing. I think we want to move with deliberate speed. And I think that's what we have tried to do throughout this process. That said, I did want to ask mainly for just public clarification because I think people could, you know, and I've had questions asked of me. Specifically, why, you know, just, just to kind of clarify. So the, the pumping station at the corner of Chelphane and Maras is going to take pressure off the more southern portions of the city. And that's because of that alleviation of pressure, basements are less likely to flood. So the important thing for people to understand is what goes on in that northeast lowest portion of the city is critical for alleviating pressure downstream. The other question, and then this actually gets an actual question rather than a statement, is can we explain why, you know, a lot of people have asked, you know, why aren't all of our sewers being separated in the, this inland district? And why is this plan, the one being put forward? The way that I've described it is it's about trying to be, just spend money in the smartest way possible. How can we have maximum impact in terms of the reduction of flooding with minimizing what is already going to be a considerable expense for the city and taxpayers? But can, can, you know, Shane or anyone else in the administration could, or perhaps our consultants can explain why we're only separating that northeast quadrant and the M Streets, you know, Mount Vernon and McKinley and.
I'll start and you can, I'll let him.
You can correct him.
But I think you actually, I think you kind of worded it pretty properly. What, what this is doing is if I taking a significant volume of stormwater out of the system, it benefits the whole system because now you've added additional capacity at the Kirby Road pump station that serves the entire community. So that was really the basis is how do we get the biggest bang for the buck? And we looked at those alternatives and they are in that 2000 and.
You want some light reading?
Where we examine, you know, what are the options? How can we, you know, you know, have the biggest impact for the dollars? And this is not to say that down the road, additional steps that can be taken. We've gone bases, starting with the Lakeside District. And the real intent of the separation of the Lakeside District that was, was to prevent the storm combined sewage from overflowing into Lake St. Clair. And so by reducing that combined sewage in that district, we've, we've been able to essentially eliminate this spillover of sanitary sewage to the lake. This is now driving our system even more and will, will provide relief for, for the entire community.
And I have one additional question because I know this is very theoretical in terms of the cost for individual taxpayers in the city overall. But I just wanted clarification on, I guess it's slide 26, where we talk about the average cost, monthly cost. Is this already factoring in? I know that we're going to have some millages right for our sewer system coming off. Is there any, is there any of that going on yet or is this just a straight?
I wish we would not have this slide in this presentation because there are some factors. But as part of our, our supplemental for the project plan prescribed and what we have to provide. Certainly, I mean, going from a 20-year to a 30-year funding here or, or SRF loan will have a significant impact on what the, what the annual or monthly cost is for residents. There are other things that, you know, we will look at in conjunction with this project. Is there debt services coming off the books that we can now substitute? There will be a cost, not bad about it, but we will be working closely with the, the budget committee to try to structure in a way that, that is the most profitable way possible for residents.
I appreciate that the estimates on there, even if you know that this is like the slide says, a theoretical calculation with lots of error. And I'm confident that this council and future councils will do its absolute best to keep the overall cost down.
I have this one comment. I'd like to adopt what Councilman John Vellulie said, the compliments made to you all for doing this magnificent report. As I told Shane earlier today, I learned a lot. I see this historical document detailing all the, the rain events just laid out so succinctly. So thank you for that. And I have one question that was already addressed and that was what is a high-surcharge area? And I got clarification on that earlier today. So this document, I just had that one question. Thank you.
No comments. I think everything is laid out pretty easily to understand. And I'm really excited about the project and it's a long overdue, but it took us a long time to get there. Thank you.
I don't have any questions, Mr. Mayor, but I do have a comment. You know, this is, this has been a real thorny issue for years in Gross Point Farms. And I can tell you, I mean, my, like, the Bollardian basement and its house effectively underneath just destroyed with two big flooding things. So this council has heard a lot of stories such as that. And they know that we had to really do some betting on some of these different proposals and with the cost. And I say this only because there's been a lot of rumors and myths going around about this project. What you're hearing tonight is exactly what this council has worked on and other councils before us have had to take into consideration. So I hope that this proposal really does get some interest as far as people actually reading it and understanding it. Because there's a lot of rumors going around. This is the factual understanding of what we're dealing with right now.
Thanks. I've, I've written down my remarks. I'm not nearly as sloven and sophisticated as Beth and you guys. So I've written down some, some things that I'd just like to say. This is a monster, monster project. Let's make sure of that. It's a monster in terms of construction management and contract administration. It's a monster project in terms of scope and cost, noise, dust, inconvenience. And it will test the patience of some of our residents. In 2011, when I was first elected, the city suffered several large storm events that flooded the basements and ruined personal belongings for hundreds of our residents. Then in 2021, we had more of the same flooding, which brought further insult to, to hundreds more residents in our, in our city. Now this council today is poised to do something that will help mitigate future basement and street flooding. Despite the challenges that we all know we have, we need to keep the goals of the project in mind, which are less basement and street flooding, considerable reduction of combined sewer, sewage discharge to the city of Detroit, and fewer long-term headaches for our residents. I've been a part of this solution to this problem for years now. I've met with our staff, with our engineers, and reviewed various plans. I've been a part of this solution uh to this problem for years now. I've met with our staff, with our engineers and reviewed various plans. I'm committed to the success, as you all seem to be, success of this project because I know our professionals are. Uh in the end, while we can't pretend to say any uh that we cannot pretend to say the completion of this project will completely eliminate uh the risk of future flooding events, I'm quite sure our residents will be less vulnerable to the outrage uh and the insult and grief that accompanies um flooding events. So that's what I had to say about that. And thank you very much.
I just wanna add one comment about the ti- a lot of the timing on what we start this project is unfortunately tied to the state's review and approval from the SRF funding applications. I think if you saw it up there quickly, but these decisions won't be made by the state until later this year. Then funding will happen almost yearly. So some of the funds that we're going to spend in the early process are funds that we, as hopefully good stewards of our citizens' money, have accumulated in our water fund to at least start the process before we hear whether the state's gonna award us full, partial or none uh on the SRF application. We anticipate we'll probably have to bond some of this, uh but we'll hopefully get as much of it through the state as possible. So a lot of the timing is depending on our application being considered and approved by the state of Michigan. We would like to start digging tomorrow. Uh fortunately, we're tied into that um process. And I think I wanna echo what Lev said is uh it's it's, we are still part, no matter what we do for the farms, we're still part of the regional system. Flooding from almost three years ago now, June largely started, if not solely started, in Detroit. And it came back at us with a lot of force. Um this project will not guarantee that people's basements don't flood. And I have done my basement twice already. I'm like, is that the second time? But it's 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 horrible, but we can't count on it. This is not, you know, fixable. We rely on Rose Point Park doing its part, Rose Point City, Dearborn, City of Detroit, everybody who partakes in Oakland County, who partakes in the Great Lakes Water Authority, has to do their part. So this is our part of that process. So I will initially, you know, right now beg for our citizens' patience, both in getting the process started and once started, uh the disruption that will impact a large part of our community uh is it's not going to be easy and we will be in it until end of two thousand twenty five and twenty and to two thousand twenty six, I think, as well. So uh here we sit in two thousand twenty three. Hopefully, we're all back here in two thousand twenty six, popping a cork, asking champagne if the project's done. Burning the mortgage, as they say, and uh we'll have this stuff. So uh without any more comments from council, I'll open it to the public for any questions. Mr. Durbin, run up.
Andy, with three oh six, good. One of the concerns I have, whatever that was, I just found a project Friday night, took me into the package. This is the biggest product I've done in twenty years and no one knows about it. No one's here. I mean, this is, I mean, disappointing. We've spent forty million dollars plus interest and we don't know about it. I mean, I know about it, but most people don't. This is not good. We should have done a better job getting the word out about what's gonna happen. I'm really disappointed. And maybe, I I don't know, but I mean, I guys did a great job. I mean, Jennifer, nice engineering job. It's kind of scary the numbers and it's kind of scary what it's gonna cost on our water bills, forty five dollars potentially. That's sixty four percent increase. That's that's gonna really hurt a lot of people. I understand maybe there's some people helping with. A lot of concern. That's a huge fight cost to this project and, you know, I'm I'm just getting estimates done to build our basement after all that devastation. Um so I'm concerned plus all the, what's it gonna cost? Do you think we can really get, how much we're gonna, what's the reality of getting this this SRF fund? You know, I think it's not really good.
We're not planning on all of it, but
You can make it song.
So but the nice thing is we're still uh triple A bond rated.
Right, right.
And we will continue to work hard physically to keep that bond rated up.
I understand. That's good.
Yeah, it will be higher than two percent.
And we're gonna talk about forty million plus. The SRF can't do that. That's for that one piece. The other piece, the other piece, the other launch correct for that for that pumping supply.
All pieces, I understand, but it's it's not gonna be over. I mean, the one thing, I I was not a council. I ran friendly with the project's completed, but I had a conflict. Shane, you're here. Even the the project done in nineteen ninety nine and nineteen eighty eight dollars on the Lakeside District.
It was twenty million.
Twenty million dollars with no mechanicals, right? And it was literally just gravity taking water off the system and denying the sewer system. So I I guess it's an enormous amount of money, but I'm thinking thirty, you know, twenty three years later, that is double plus all the mechanical and everything. I'm kind of shocked that it's only around double because so many other things have bought Google.
Right, right.
Since two thousand nineteen ninety nine, nineteen ninety eight. Obviously, uh hopefully everybody in the community sees that we have been good stewards with their money and know that we're going, we went through the process of deciding a ton of moves. As Shane said, we want to come up with the best solution that was not crazy in terms of expense. If we did the whole community two years ago, I think the number was about
Hundred forty thousand.
Hundred forty million.
Yeah.
Hundred forty million dollars.
Yeah, I remember that.
Yeah, so and today's dollars two years later might be closer to one fifty.
And I have a concern with inflation or not, Mr. Mayor. This is these are the numbers.
Like I said, we'd like to start them off. Thank you, Andy. All right, Shane. Thanks. Anybody else in the public? Lana, put your hand up if you have a question, please.
Right, Ivan, uh three one three, Maros. Um I've only been living in the city less than a year. Last few months, our backyard has flooded. So it'd be nice to have all that taken care of. My only concern is how, you said two years, two or three years, and you're tearing up Maros?
Well, we're not. That's that's the thing. Maros will be impacted somewhat, but the bulk of the construction will be through the golf course.
Okay.
Because that's one of the reasons we wanted the golf course is to try to limit the impact on Maros Road. Because there you're talking a four-foot pipe on Maros that doesn't have to go down there anymore because it's that's going over to the country.
Okay, I guess I didn't really see though.
Yeah, the purple is on the club.
Okay, so majority of Maros will not be done.
You don't, there's be some touching the Maros all the way down. It's not, it's a storm source, but not a four-foot transmission line.
Okay, my only concern was the house being built across the street, you know, that with tearing up Maros and how much it will mess up. But this is my only, that's my only concern.
Like we said, that's that's one of the negative proportions. It's a lot of construction. I'm down Shell Farm, so it'll be good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So you had your hand up in the page, purple plant?
My name is David Newhouse. I have two ninety, Mount Vernon. And uh first of all, I'd like to thank you for the presentation. It's certainly a lot easier going through it uh than trying to pick through the details online. Um I do admittedly have a bias. I live between Oak Prairie and Charleboy on Mount Vernon. But when looking at the figures in a previous scope a few months ago, we had no flooding on our block in the disastrous flood of twenty twenty one. And then in twenty sixteen, if you look at the, there was hardly any flooding in the city. Maybe there were fifteen or twenty homes affected. And on the uh south side of the street, there were homes on Mount Vernon, but then nothing since, which implied there was an unusual, unique situation that caused that blockage in twenty sixteen because no one else was flooded, just those six homes. But um the the other point I would raise is on Mount Vernon, on that block, the sanitation line runs on the north side. Uh it runs through backyards over to uh Mulroney. So we're not part of that sanitation system on Mount Vernon. So the question uh and maybe it's a cost savings, why would that block of Mount Vernon be included in this scope? And when considering too, the the same block of Kinley between Charleboy and Oak Prairie is not included in the scope. So and they had far worse flooding than we did in twenty twenty one. So that's that's one point. Um cost savings potentially, obviously there's a bias because we're going to be inconvenienced. But if it's not needed, why why are we doing it? Why are we inconveniencing uh those those on that block? Um also, how will residents have access to their garages during this construction? Um I think not, but I'd like to hear it officially. And then for how long? It would, is it for the two two-year duration? Is it going to be construction done on a block-by-block basis, street-by-street? Or are we expected to part for maybe a four four-month period of time, three-month period of time on Charleboy and Oak Prairie? So the and it's recognizing that there will be stages in construction. Then after construction, how will the streets be repaired? Will it be concrete? Will it be asphalt? If anybody has driven down Oak Prairie Southbound uh after it was duly paved, across from Kirby Road, there's a part that is dug up and the replacement asphalt is like an unintentional speed bump for the right side of the car. Um so that that's a concern of how professional the the repave is is going to be. Then I did not see any mention of rodent mitigation in the documents. There's nothing indicating there's any budget towards rodents. And when construction happens, especially with sewer lines, the the rodents or or uh wildlife that live in the sewers are going to find other locations to dwell. And that's a concern because obviously garages are a concern or come into homes, but I didn't see anything addressing that that point. Um also, if if we're to partner vehicles on side streets, what patrols will be increased? Because every time we see the the Rose Point News or Rose Point Times, there's a catalytic converter being stolen out of St. John's. And it's not just St. John's, but we can't, we can't prep our tires in the garage. That's assuming we won't have access to it. And finally, um will there be a community VA sign that we can insu- ensure to residents for a quick response? Instead of leaving a voicemail at somebody's somebody's desk and not knowing when we get a reply, but that's another important point. Thank you. But sorry.
I think it's a lot to respond to, but um like, you know, I I think there's a lot of details there that clearly it's gonna involve uh additional meetings, communication with those residents that are to be impacted. Uh and we've we've done that before. We did that when we did sewer separation uh what we call the Lakeside District uh east of uh east of Ridge Road. And so um, you know, there there will be that process. Uh so I don't know, you know, it is, it will be disruptive, but we would obviously work uh with the residents and keep them informed as we we move each step along the way. Um in terms of the VA's on, there will be a name, so be named. Uh we will have a project manager who will be accessible, who will be on the street, be at the field and will be able to address concerns as A lions.
Just one more point. I have to agree with communication, the issue that was brought up previously. The people that I spoke with, and I did not speak with a wide sample of my block that is on Mount Vernon, no one knew of this project. So whether they're not reading Rose Point News or, and we knew about it because my wife is very active looking at the notes of the city council meeting, so. And I sent out an email yesterday and the responses I got back is thanks for letting us know. We knew nothing about it.
Uh we, again, we we, this is a series of meetings, so we had a meeting when we did the original uh the project uh plan that uh that that had the different various scenarios. And then uh the basis of design was done at a separate meeting uh that was a public meeting. And I think it did give, you know, quite a bit of trust and and that information uh has been included on our website, the homepage. This meeting is the first thing you you'll see when you click on the homepage of uh the city website uh is is uh this this informational meeting tonight and 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 opportunity for input. Uh it's not the last opportunity for input. Um we will definitely want it uh as we we move forward. Uh we we're gonna go into next step, engineering phase and 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 so uh additional input from our residents is gonna be incredible. Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else in the public? Seeing no more public comments, public comment is closed. What is the pleasure of the council?
I have a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Lululee. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move uh to adopt proposed resolution as provided in attachment two of our April ten reading packets uh which known as the project planning document for the inland district sewer separation project and designate the city manager as the authorized officer.
The board, all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close.
Motion carries. I have another motion, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I move that pursuant to the completing of the uh request for qualifications, the IRP process that the city of Rose Point Farms award consulting, design and construction engineering services as it relates to the inland district sewer separation project to Hubble, Roth and Clark.
The board?
The board.
All the papers say aye.
Aye.
You opposed?
Motion carries. Lululee.
And one final motion, Mr. Mayor, please. I move that the city of Rose Point Farms award design engineering services to Hubble, Roth and Clark as stated in their proposal dated April ten, two thousand twenty three, and the amount not to exceed two million eight hundred eighty-three thousand dollars.
The board? All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Other business, Mr. Eastside.
I have other business.
Anybody else have other business?
Mr. Mayor, I just take it, I do note uh communication concerns. And while I think it was publicized, it was public hearing, I mean, we have a note and and act actually it's essentially on our website. But um we're on a communications committee with possibly uh so I've got myself and so reported on our agenda, I could probably increase the communication in different realities, perhaps uh some other difficult ones might work out to help people and more on that.
Anybody else in the public? Alright, anybody in the public for public comment tonight? Alright, seeing none. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
He's one of them.
Mr. Mayor.
Hey, all guys, sort of, um, sort of, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, yeah.
Hey, funny, you're first.
I mean, we did, we did on the last week of that.
We had a question here.